Good evening. I will call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, August 17th, 2023. We are the Wasika Public Schools School Board. It's our regular meeting. It's 5:30 PM. We have everyone here except for Director Kruger, who is joining us virtually. So, thank you, Theron, for being here. We will continue with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
And we'll continue with the agenda. Can I get a motion for item three, approval of agenda? I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Recognition of visitors. We don't have anyone here tonight, and we did not receive any emails. Just a reminder for anyone watching at home, you can send an email at wasikadistrict@gmail.com, and we'll read it at a future meeting. Or, anyone is welcome to come to our meetings and speak during our open forum period. Moving on then to payment of claims. Alyssa?
I've reviewed the claims for the month of July and recommend action of payment for those claims. Accounts payable in the amount of $2,351,844.41. July dental in the amount of $15,502.16. And payroll in the amount of $903,804.3.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Continuing on then to our information items, beginning with our superintendent report.
Yeah, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to give my report this evening. I've got two items to review this evening, both relatively brief, but I think some things we've been talking about quite a bit for the last several months. First, the facility survey. I want to give some updates just on that. You all received the materials in your update this week, so I don't need to necessarily go through all those materials and the process of the plan. But really, what I'm asking the board to consider is that we have very perspectives on the board. You know, we have multiple perspectives, multiple influences, multiple groups that we're talking within the community. And we can tell that if, right now, with our current influence and current information we have, we're really kind of at a standstill. And so, when that happens, what do you do? Well, you get more information, and you keep working through with what the next steps are. So, one of the things that I'm asking the board to consider is to do this facility survey outreach in the next, you know, six weeks or so. Because none of us as individuals really have access to the entire community sentiment. We just don't. We talk to as many people as we possibly can, but we need to get more information from the entire community. And so, the survey is just that. It's an opportunity to gather more information. We're going to do it more proactively than we have in some previous surveys with the mailer out to every household in the school district, so we have an opportunity to not miss all the residents. And they can respond in multiple ways, which, you know, the materials I sent yesterday kind of gave some insight into that. We also will go speak to as many groups as will have us, give them information and to share what's happening. And again, this is not a vote. This is a feedback survey. So, the risk to the board is actually quite low, if there is any, I would say. Because really, this is not a binding vote. This is information. So, if we get the survey results back, for example, and it's favorable, but by a very slim margin, you know, the board might say they don't have confidence yet to move forward with a 52% approval rating on the survey. You know, conversely, it comes back unfavorable. And one of the things I am asking we consider leaving on the survey is those reasons why people feel the way they do. Is because if it comes back unfavorable, it helps us to know why. What are people really struggling with? Is it just the cost? Is it concept itself? Is it all the different things that we've talked about in previous meetings? Those things. We have to understand what the community's thinking. So, we have that process. And really, when you think about why this idea versus any other idea, and what the community is talking about, we have to keep in mind that it's our job as a school district to bring ideas to the community. The community will eventually tell us what they think about this idea. They have the final say in how things go. But it's our job to really think of these ideas and present, as the administrator, what I think is the most efficient plan moving forward. It has some things we have to work through, no doubt about that. But I think this is of the options we have, which, one of which is not do nothing. I still think this is the best opportunity for us to consider moving forward. So, the rest of the board's low. Because if we speak to the community, they give us feedback. You know, my message to the community would be, this is an idea that I think is the best plan as the administration. The board's not sure. They need your feedback. Please help us shape the future of Wasika by giving us your feedback on this survey. And then, you as a board, you know, your risk is minimal because you're just essentially taking the feedback objectively and moving with it, going forward from there. It might be a little bit of changing our thinking because there are some folks, you know, who feel differently about this process. And so, depending on how the results come back, any one of us, any one of the eight of us, is probably, there's a little bit of anxiety of, maybe it's not what I want it to be or I hope it would be. Of course, that's anxiety. It's all there. But that's not risk to the board. That's not risk moving forward. That's just where we're going, moving forward. So, one of the things I think about is that it's not the community's job to think of these ideas. That's our job as a school district. Again, they approve it or they deny it at the end of the day. But when we think about who would come up with an idea of what to do next, it's going to be us. And this is the idea that we're asking the community to consider, which then we'd ask the board to consider. So, I probably even said more, rambled more about that than I wanted to for this evening. But any questions you have about the process, I'm happy to answer them now. Otherwise, I'm just considering, I'm considering we'd like to get more information for you all to consider. That's the process. So, before I move on, I'll stop and see what questions you have about that one.
Eric, in the email that you sent out that you had a bullet point or your PowerPoint, is that something that you guys are voting on tonight to include into this voting, this survey through?
The PowerPoint itself?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, that will be part of the process, given the presentation. If there's feedback on it, I'd like to hear that tonight, too. We can always change it or work it through.
Yep. Do you want me to bring the topics up right now that I have?
No, would be good. Yep.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. I know we've touched some bases on this, but in the past, in all the committee meetings I've been involved in and walking through the building. And I see a couple, on the current facility status, I see a couple of points that you have there. One is water quality. You know, we know what that situation is. And so, I gather that. There are two, there's two other items. One is water intrusion. My question to you is, what does water intrusion mean?
We have had leakage in the past. We have had leaking in that lower level in the basement in the past. That has not happened very often recently. It did earlier this summer, as I understand it, briefly, in the elevator room, but not in the elevator area. But not any of the-
Is that like an elevator pit?
Correct. Yes. Yes.
Yep.
Right. And so, we have not had water getting in regularly lately. We've been able to seal things up, but the water damage that's been in the building has been repaired. You can see it in the ceiling tiles in the basement, that sort of thing. Right?
Ceiling tiles in the basement? That's not a water leak. That's a humidity issue, correct?
Humidity. Correct. Yes.
Yep. Which is controlled by your air system.
Correct.
Which, I brought that up in the past, where those are non-humidity resistant tiles. And that also, if you're not running your air conditioner in the summer, you're going to have your tiles like that at the end of the summer. So, I don't really feel that's a strong point to be presenting to the community, you know, for a humidity issue. Also, controls, if we haven't looked at the system, if you don't know and can't confirm that your coil arrangement and your air handlers are proper for dehumidification. If they are, we should be utilizing our HVAC controls properly to dehumidify, which is something that almost every school does nowadays. So, I'm struggling with the humidating water infiltration because I know I've asked for specific dates previous to today, and nobody could really give me examples except for the two 100-year floods and a broken sewer pipe. I've had a daughter go through there. They said she's, you know, I mean, I know I'm talking to a third grader, but a lot of other people as well that I don't recall having to move the classes out because we've had water issues. So, I just, I'm struggling with, unless we have examples specific recently besides those points, that that would be a good sale, a sell to the community on a water intrusion. And like I said, humidity isn't water intrusion. That's a utilization of our HVAC system. Eric?
Right.
And I know I've seen air quality. You know, I can work through some of that stuff, too, with you on your HVAC system to help you put some of that lingo together. Air quality issues as well. You know, I guess, what are our points with air quality issues?
Well, when every single staff member responds to the survey saying they feel their classroom is uncomfortable and unhealthy, then that tells me that we maybe have some air quality issues. You know?
So, that's a personal preference, then, right?
Well, I suppose. Yeah.
But unanimous.
Because when we design schools, we design them at a 5 CFM outside air per person in the classroom. And we also go with the, or you can go with a .06 CFM per square foot. So, in a thousand square, you know, roughly, what does that come up to? Like 400 CFM per 1,000 square foot classroom? And those univentilators are pulling outside air in. So, when it comes to an air quality, that's pretty much what all these engineers are designing these buildings to today.
Right.
And they are utilizing univentilators as well, like these.
Yep. Well, so what your point is that you just don't, you don't agree that some of those things are good points? That's kind of what I'm hearing you say. Okay.
Yeah. I think it's leading you down a road that unless you have some air testing, you know, proven, done, I don't know if you can say that air quality is the issue, unless you have toxins or something producing in our spaces that are another different-
If we had toxins, we wouldn't have kids in the building. I mean, that's the point.
Exactly.
I mean, so the point of it, it's not the point of being unhealthy. It's the point of being uncomfortable. And then impacting the learning environment when kids are uncomfortable all day. So, but that's, I think, for everyone to discuss and decide where to move from.
You know, along those lines, you don't have in here that a lot of the classrooms have ambient noise to the point of most of the teachers have to wear microphones all the time. So, that's definitely an issue with that building also.
Yeah. And keep in mind that this is a-
I'm saying I would add that to what you have here.
Yeah. Keep in mind, this is a survey, so as not to have people, or I'm sorry, this is a presentation that's intended to be five to seven minutes with follow-up detail about what that means going on in other conversations. If I wanted to give every group I talked to the hour and 15-minute presentation I gave you this spring, they'd shut off.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's probably lots of stuff. There's lots of stuff in here I could put. These are just the bullet points to kind of get the conversation going. Yeah. And Theron, people can disagree with me. That's the whole point of getting out there.
100%. But I just don't want to be leading them down the wrong road if we actually don't have an air quality issue. But it comes down to personal preference and feel. I mean, I'll be honest. I can go to an office building, be an HVAC guy, and we put gummy thermostats in because we always got somebody complaining that you're just never going to keep happy.
I think the water issue is a, I mean, it's a threat that's always there.
It is. And the Department of Health, we've been down the fil- just the water one, to focus on that particularly. The Department of Health does not accept filters as a long-term solution. We've been down that road with them already. And so, we have ideas, always you can mitigate for now, but the long-term solution. And again, what I'm getting at about all these things is information from the community. We are all putting our own personal perspective on this, and we have to make sure we give the community the chance to tell us what they think. And if they think these are good ideas or good thoughts, because they may come back with the exact same questions you have, Theron, about prove it to me. Okay. Or, there are a lot of people who are inherently and say, yeah, it is very uncomfortable in there. I agree with you. So, I think that's the point. Right? We're trying to get it out here. And I can talk to groups and they can say, tell me more about that. Or, we disagree, you're wrong. And that's the point. Because I'm doing it then. So, as a board, you're gathering information. Yeah.
Can I add one thing? So, you had four points of the different challenges that were listed. Maybe, question for Theron would be, what should the four points be? If those aren't the right ones or they're maybe not solid enough, what maybe are the best four points? How should, what should we present as weaknesses?
Well, I guess, Grant, what I was getting at is if we don't have the information to back it up with the testing, to say that it's, the qualities are, you know, there's issues there, what do us as a board tell people after they've listened to Eric's bullet point, his presentation, to how I, what can I back Eric up with when he says air quality issues?
Well, probably the fact that we have to, we cannot control the building in the wintertime because we cannot, right now, we can't find parts to replace things at times. To your point, I'm 100% confident that our staff is trained. They know how to run the system. It's just what we have for an aging system. I mean, this building, I mean, this is another example here at Central, but this is not what we're talking about for this PowerPoint. But, I mean, it took us, it's taken us months to get the control figured out. Everyone who else had to work on it is retired or not alive anymore. They're trying to figure out how to get this going here. So, I think it's a comfort. So, maybe I need to use the word comfort because that really is a comfort thing. Maybe, I guess, that's a better way to put it. But we get, I mean-
That would fit what you explained to me a little better than quality. Yep?
Okay.
And just to give you an example, on the control system, right now, controls are running about $5 to $6 a square foot on a renovation in a building like that.
Did you have other points from this slideshow that you wanted to?
No.
Okay.
No, no, no. These are, I mean, following up just with what Eric said. I liked what he said about changing that from to comfort instead of quality. But, you know, these are all good. I like that. What he said there, we can look at that. But I just wanted to let you know, when I read it as a person that knows air and I hear air quality, I just wanted to lay all that out there to, you know, I don't want somebody saying that it's bad air. Like, I want to be able to back Eric up on this.
Yeah. And that makes sense to me in the conversation because that's the conversation we have with staff all the time, is that it is healthy. I mean, it is safe.
Well, and even just the, I mean, it's aging HVAC system. I mean, there's that, too. I mean, it's in your, it's one of your, it's in the LTFM as, is that one of our unbudgeted? Or it's weighed? Where is it?
It's pushed back.
Yeah. I mean, it's an aging system that, yeah.
But air comfort issues, does that read better? Does anybody else feel strongly one way or the other on that? Okay. Good. Thank you, Theron.
Thank you.
That's helpful. Yeah.
Does anyone have any other comments or questions in regards to the survey? I mean, Eric sent a whole bunch of links that would go along with this.
And please continue to add to the spreadsheet I sent if you think of other folks I should talk to.
So, we can just add to that?
Just add to that. Because I can't possibly think of everybody.
Yes.
And folks who you think would agree with us and folks that you think might not. I mean, everybody on the list will want to try to get to-
I think just people who need to hear the word or hear the presentation.
Yeah. Again, the community will tell us what they think, but I feel much more comfortable that they have the information, and then they'll respond.
If there's no, nothing else, then yeah.
All right. Strategic plans. So, now, this is kind of the celebration part of the night. So, kind of finishing up some of the information we have with the strategic plan, the vision card from last spring. And some of this, we got a little bit of a preview of it in the DAC meeting this spring. But I wanted, we just had a data retreat on Tuesday with our administrators, looking at all of our results, academics for the last year. And then, next Tuesday, they have the opportunity to start digging in with their building leadership teams to see how we're going to look at what our action plans look like for this year. And I wanted to point out some really exciting things here. So, in grades kindergarten through third grade, 74% of our students demonstrated moderate to aggressive growth in math on their early, on their math assessments. That's pretty exciting. That three-quarters of our kids are looking at growth. And, you know, coming out of the pandemic, we talked about, we are where we are. We just can't stay there. So, we're not focusing as much, particularly in the lower grades, on what benchmark they're at. But are they growing? Are they growing as fast as we possibly can have them grow? And that's pretty exciting. Same grade, 62% of students, moderate to aggressive growth in reading. So, really exciting that we're having a good chunk of our students making really strong progress in their reading. In grades four through nine, we focus a lot on the NWA tests. And that's that test that will kind of go up and down based on how you're doing on the test. And it's based on norms and grade levels. In grades four through nine, five of the six grades exceeded their growth targets in math. So, they have, here's where you should be growing. Here's what your grade level did. And they're, boom. Five of those six grade levels are exceeding the growth targets in math. Grades four through nine. Pretty exciting with that, too. And all grades were within two or three points. They call them RIT points, which you think about, in fourth grade, they start with maybe the high 100s. By the time they're in eighth and ninth grade, it's 240-ish or 250-ish. All grade levels were within two or three RIT points of the norm, of the national norm. So, pretty exciting for that median to be there. In grades four through nine for reading was a little different because not everybody took the assessment spring and fall. But two of the four grade levels that took them both fall and spring exceeded their growth goals as well. And all grades were within two RITS of the norm in the spring where they need to be for a benchmark. So, really exciting results in our reading and math. MCAs. MCAs are embargoed until next week. So, we can't on a public meeting say what our MCA scores was. But what I feel really excited to tell you is we show district growth in both math and reading. We, in fact, we exceeded our goal targets for growth in both subject areas as far as student achievement went. So, I'm feeling very positive about our student achievement growth right now. We are not where we need to be necessarily on benchmark across the board. Right? We still have some students who are not at grade level in some areas. We need to work with supporting them. But we're making exceptional growth. And I attribute that, obviously, to Brooke McGuire and teaching and learning, obviously, to principals. But more than anything else,[1308.04] obviously to principals, but more than anything else, the teachers who are doing everything they can for those kids. Our teachers really, really laid out there for kids. And our students are working hard. They're, they really want to, want to continue to exceed. So that's exciting. Our graduation rate, rate, the high school consistently is above state average. The last five years, I look today, continues to be above state average at our high school. You know, we look at our ALC and that goes a little bit up and down percentage-wise, based on how many kids we have at the particular time. But those kids, we know, need sometimes five or six years. We're not going to throw any way, kids away. We're going to keep, in fact, I was just working with Mandy Nohr earlier this week on how do we keep some kids who wouldn't, would be dropping out, but they want to go all online. We're not an online school, but we might partner with a local district who does offer that. So if those kids can stay with Sika Public Schools' kids, but still get that online experience and graduate here in the next year from our, from our district. So the strategic plan topic tonight was all about academics. And I think that that was a really encouraging meeting for me on Tuesday, and I knew it was coming, I've seen it. But to see the results coming in that way really bode well for the track that we're on for our, for our teaching and learning, teaching and learning department. So thank you very much for the staff and the students for that work because we are, we're continuing to just, to fly. So looking forward to that this fall. Continue to go.
Yeah, great. Good news going into the start of a new school year, so.
It really is exciting. Yeah, it really is.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Huthsith? Okay. And then, as you said, Mr. Molling is not here tonight, but you have the financial update to share.
I do. And typically in August, we don't usually bring any graphs or any kind of enrollment reports yet because until September 3rd or whatever, 4th, whatever day that is, we make sure they actually show up before we know how many kids are going to be here. And, but I think most importantly is that we are, with the exception of one or two positions that we have to still finish, we are fully staffed for the fall. We've been able to, to fill positions that we needed to. Our, our paras, we only have a, one or two openings yet for that. So we're really looking good there. And in the budget, we presented. So we were able to, through some, through some, moving around of, of staff through some attrition this summer, were able to decide, figure out how we're going to do our work more efficiently. So we're staying, you know, we should, we should be lower than the budget target here going into this fall, which is always positive when you have that going on. And as you saw earlier in the consent agenda, the personnel committee meeting heard this too, but you will notice that Laura Putzy was in the consent agenda, Lori, Lori, excuse me, because we were able to, through some attrition, move some things around and remove her from unrequested leave of absence. So I feel good about that going into this last year as well, at a, at no extra cost to the district because, within our budget parameters because of the way things moved around. So that's a, that's another positive feel-good coming back into the school year. So finances are in good, are in good shape.
Good. All right. Moving on then to committee and board member reports. Charlie, you want to start? You wanted to get out of it, I know.
I think the only, the only meeting that I've been to in the last, in the last month was the arena meeting. That same, things are going well there. Of course, there's some, there's some issues with the dehumidifier and the compressors and all that stuff. And that's all being taken care of. So, so everything looks well down there. They're ready to put ice in here, I think, like the third, fourth of October. So, so they're moving ahead on that. And I, we did have a, we did have another meeting here that, that I was not able to go, I was not able to go. And so, that's it.
Thank you. I just had the finance meeting and Eric covered that.
You agree we're good?
Yep. Addie, what's going on?
Hi guys. Been here in a while, but, um, so marching band started and we got, it was rough, like it usually is, first couple of weeks. But, I mean, we got most of our show on the field and we're excited for our parent preview on the 25th. So, yeah. And then fall sports started. And I can tell you, I'm really exhausted even after one week of it. But even with like, all of our new coaches, I've heard nothing but good reviews from new coaches with every, everywhere. There's a lot of them this year. But, um, and then football players are having their annual cookie dough fundraiser. So if you're in need of cookie dough, find a football player, or if you just want to support their team. And then student council is kicking up this, um, this week. We're doing home, homecoming posters and seventh grade orientation's already started. So yeah, there's a lot of stuff going on, but everything's going well so far.
All right. Thank you. Grant.
I was part of two committees, personnel committee, which we covered a lot of things, a lot of beginning of the year shifting around, but that was good. Finance committee as well, which is kind of the same thing. We talked about how any of those shifts, but the conclusion I gathered from it was even the shifts are still all within budget and everything looks good from there. So that's what I had.
Thank you. Dave?
I watched a webinar today.
All right. I'm so glad you did that.
It was on Minnesota State Demography. And I took a few notes, but I think I'm just going to pass on those. It, it probably wasn't the best one I've ever watched. I was hoping they would tie it to public education. And the gal that gave it did a very nice job, but she didn't really, they didn't really tie it back to public education. So I won't, I won't give you these notes. But I, I do want to, they did say one thing, and I thought this was really interesting. By 2040, there'll be as many people, residents, citizens of the state of Minnesota over 65 as there will be students in public schools. So just think about that.
Thank you for that food for thought. All right.
That's all I have.
Adita.
We had a policies committee and we will review the policies tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Very interesting policies that we had a chance to review.
Yes. Theron, did you have any committee report?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. And I just had personnel and yeah, that's been covered. And it's just, it's, you know, in the consent agenda, you see employees leaving us, employees coming in, and it just, it just creates opportunities for everyone. And that's definitely what's going on here in the district right now. And that's good. So, all right. Moving on then to recognitions and positive board feedback. Charlie, do you want to start us off again?
Sure.
All right.
Sure. I haven't, I haven't been in the schools lately, but I see there's a lot of activity going on around there. There's, there's a lot of cars in front of schools. So things are happening. I see, heard a band out practicing. I can hear them at our place about three miles away from, or two miles away from, so they're, they're out there busy. Uh, I don't know, I have not, I've, I've been hit up, I've been hit up for the, for the fundraiser for the football.
How many people? How many people?
Two.
Only two, okay.
That I know.
I knew it was out. I think we got three within the first like 15 minutes or something like that. Um- Are you have more? You done?
Go ahead.
Okay. Same with Charlie. There's been a lot of activity going up to the school. It's fun to see all those kids up there. We hear the band from our house too, all the way on the other side of the lake some nights. So it's kind of fun. But I guess the relevant thing to me right now that I've been watching is volleyball. That new coach Chrissy, Chrissy Plonsky, I think is how you say her last name. She seems to be doing a good job. We had the volleyball sleepover last Thursday night. That went well. Not as good of a turnout as last year, but still quite a few girls over. So it's fun watching them all get back together and get in the swing of things. Thank you.
Well, I guess I just want to say I'm thankful for all my coaches, because, and directors, because they've made life so much easier for me this year with everything going on. So.
All right. Thank you. Grant.
I'll kind of give a general, and this is maybe feeding off of the band garage sale was very, had a lot of people at. And it's another sign that our community as a whole supports by bringing in donations, by coming in shopping. So it's, it's kind of just appreciation for our community in general. We seem to have a lot of good support for all the stuff that the students are doing, and that's been very good. I've also had very, heard a lot of positive things about the, I guess, the new seventh and eighth grade band director who's, I know, been helping with a lot of the band related things, but I hear about that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a little bit different, but if you've been out to Wes, the intermediate school here in the last few days, we finally got the south driveway and parking lot fixed. Looks like they did a really nice job. So thanks to Colin Green and his building and ground staff and the contractor who did it. If you had been out there a ways back, you would know that that was in really bad shape. We had patches on top of the patches on top of the patches. They dug it all out, backfilled it, new asphalt. So thanks for getting that done before school.
Yeah.
Well, if we are talking about fundraising, there is a fundraiser for Vasika Sakura Association. If you would like to get a car wash, 10 car washes for $36, please let me know. We have some stuff available. And I'm just excited to, you know, to go back to school. I am excited. My kids probably are not, but yeah, it's, they are getting there. It'll be a good year.
And this is, my, my recognition is, is, is a little bit older, but I just want to congratulate our boys track and field coach, Dave Abel, for being named the Minnesota Track and Field Head Coach of the Year for Class Double A Boys. So I think that came out like a month ago or so. But, and then obviously just welcome back to all of our staff and a special welcome to all of our new staff. I'm excited for you to be part of the district. And I'm looking forward to a really great year. So, all right. Oh, Theron, did you have any recognitions?
Sure. No, I, I joined out the youth football there, there at Blue Jay was a blitz last week and got to see how that program goes. It takes a lot of hands to, to, you know, to coordinate the, all the young athletes out there. And it's a good starter program for our football team, the high school.
Yep. Awesome. Thank you. All right. All right, move on to action items. Charlie, you ready? All right. Can I get a motion for item A?
I can make a motion to approve acceptance of received gifts and donations. I think it was $3,600, $3,650 from Midwest Bank. Thank you very much.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. And this is a roll call. Caitlin, please read the roll.
Grant Shepard?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Adita Mansfield?
Yes.
Charlie Creep?
Yeah, yes.
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes. All right. Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item B?
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2023-24 food service vending meals contract with Head Start.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Grant. Any discussion? Head Start's still in the building here, right?
Correct.
All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item C? I'll make a motion to approve the 2023-24 food service meal pricing.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Except maybe Mr. Huthsith, if you could just call out again, that meals are free, but what does-
Breakfast and lunch are free for all students here this, this year, based on the, the state funding that we've, that is going to cover that. We continue to set our prices based on the federal guidelines so that any additional meals, adult meals, those kind of things still are priced appropriately. And, and should that funding from the state ever decide not to be continued, we, we are then up to date with our current pricing.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item D?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed facility survey.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion?
I only wanted to add one thing that, you know, as I was trying to consider this, I was thinking this isn't, we're not, just to kind of clarification of ourselves, we're not saying we support or don't support it. We're basically saying we want to get more feedback. We want to get more information from the public. So for me, I support it because I want to hear more about what people have to say.
Yes, this is, the survey and the presentation that goes with it is what the administration is recommending. And then they'll bring all of that to the board, and then it's up to the board to decide what to do with that. So, yep. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none, we will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item E?
I'll make a motion that we approve the superintendent's goals for the 23-24 school year.
I'll second.
23-24.
I'll second that. First and a second. Any discussion?
So I suppose a year from now, we call you Dr. Huthsith?
Depends if I meet the goal, I guess. That will be the goal, right? You can still call me Eric.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item F? I'll make a motion to approve the school board goals for the 2023-2024 year.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item G? I'll make a motion to acknowledge the 2023- Oh, never mind. I'm sorry. Yes, we're just going to acknowledge. We don't need a motion. We're acknowledging the 23-24 handbook. Yes.
No significant changes.
Right. Yeah, sorry about that. Thank you. And so in those lines, we'll also acknowledge the 23-24 combined general business and purchasing procedure handbook. All right. Can I get a motion for item I?
I can make a motion to approve July reviewed policies, policy 301, 302, 303, 304, 305, and 306.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion?
I would just want to point out before we get through these three agenda items that, you know, July, obviously we talked through our series of the 300 series with no significant changes to any of those. As per our regular schedule, starting with the August meeting and carrying us into later the fall, we'll start tackling the policies that legislative action approved or recommended changes to. And you can see by there being a J and a K, there's different approaches we took to those various policies, which we'll get to those. But that's why there's an I, J, K, because those are all looking, looked at them in different sets.
Yep.
But no, 301 to 306, no significant changes.
Yep. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item J?
I'll make a motion that we approve the August reviewed policies.
I'll second that. We have a first and a second. Those are 102, 419, 424, and 504.
And I'll just point out that 102, we added a statute to the legal references in the back based on legislative changes. 419 and 504 added a line about American Indian and tobacco pouches and dress and regalia for graduation ceremonies. And then 424, there was no change at all.
Okay, any other discussion? Thank you for clarifying that.
I think some of that was, some of the little changes in there are reviewed as, some of that was at, because of the legislative, because of legislative reasons. And then also MSBA, you know, came up with the new, with the new-
Right.
Format, so.
Correct.
Yeah. But yeah, but these particular ones didn't have significant changes.
No, just one line added.
Yeah.
That was, so.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And then item K, we're acknowledging, this is the first reading of revised policies, 418 and 506. So we will have a second reading of them next month. Anything in particular that would just, these are all just statutes?
They, they are. Well, but, but there's a lot of red in both those policies, as you see. And I want to point out to you why, particularly 418. So that's the drug-free workplace. And one of the things that MSBA is recommending is that we're very clear that even though cannabis and CBD is illegal activity here in the state of Minnesota, federally it is illegal to have on your person or utilize any marijuana products on our school district property. You can't have it on you and you can't use it at school. So you tell me it's legal now, no, too bad. You can't have it at school. So you see through that policy, multiple paragraphs referencing, this is still not allowable here. You can still not have it at school. It's almost repetitive when it comes down in the policy. But what we want to make it very clear to our, to the adults and the students we work with that it is not legal to have marijuana on school property. So even though the, the state law has changed for some different persons, the federal law governing school property hasn't changed, nor has, nor has our policy on that. So yes, we'll be working through some things with prescriptions. We'll work through all that stuff. But you can't have it on you and you can't use it in the school building. So that's what all of the, all that red in 418 is repeating that statement over and over again. That's really what that comes down to. And then 506 is adding the student discipline, changes to legislature, talking about non-exclusionary discipline for grade, students in grades K3, not taking away some of those recreational times of the day recess, and that we can't do prone restraint with students, all of which are things we already do in with Sika Public Schools. If we were to have to exclude a student in grades K through three, we would have been through a lot of work with the family to get to that point, which the law still says you can do if you get to all that work. Same thing with, with, with the recess and the lunch stuff. We don't keep a kid in from recess unless we've done all that work with the family, all that work, which is, says you still can do if you do all that work. So it is placing the law into our policy is what it is. Not a lot of choices there for us. But I do want to reassure you as a board, and we put it as one of our values, accountability there, responsibility. It doesn't, it does not impact our ability to hold students accountable and be able to support students through their, learning of their behavior. It's, it's not that it's, I won't want to say it's insignificant, because it is, there's a lot of words in there. But it doesn't necessarily change what we're doing a big time because I would say that our principals, our PBIS system, our staff is already doing everything they can to nurture kids. It's not going to impact us a great deal. So, but we'll update the policy based on the law.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. And obviously, anyone that has questions about these two policies, please direct them to Eric or anyone on the policy committee. So, all right, that's the end of our action items. Upcoming items or reminders, our next work session is Thursday, September 7th, which I think is more than, it's two weeks away, or we have like an extra week in here, don't we? Or, yeah, it's three weeks away. Yeah. So enjoy your break. So, just kidding.
And if you, if you haven't had a chance to look at it in detail yet, because there was a lot in it yesterday, do check out those dates at the end of the update I sent yesterday for the back-to-school workshop week.
Yes.
If any of those things work in your schedule, staff would love to see you if it works.
Yeah. So yeah, back to schools, back to school week, there's a few things in there that we're invited to. And then work session is September 7th, and our next regular meeting is September 21st. Anything else? The first day of school is?
Depends on how old you are.
The ninth?
With full thinking.
I just go with my mom's.
You know, I, I like the way you think. That's good. September 5th for the most- For, for the high school, it's September 5th. Other grades are a little different, but yes. Good luck to everyone as we prepare for the start of school. Beyond that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.